Okay, I'd like to call to order the Maplewood Budget Work Session for Tuesday, June 16th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Crater.
Here.
Councilmember Cardini.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
And please also all note, everyone, Finance Director Karen Dilvers on the call as well. Mayor Greenberg, you have a quorum?
Thank you. We're here tonight to review the fiscal year 2020-21 budget. And who would like to get started? Meaning Anthony or Karen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I sent out an email. I just want to make sure everyone got it. There were a few errors on the spreadsheets. I think Karen had to change some formulas to make sure they were reflected from one page to the next. And then the updated traffic study number, we were missing a zero.
Oh.
Instead of 6,000, I wish it was 6,000, we put in 60,000. And that's on page 99. But I believe that's, you know, that's something obviously the council will vote on. But I wanted to make sure I had enough to cover it. Other than that, we haven't made any major substantial changes. We've had, I think I might have had one, maybe two emails on the budget. That's it. So haven't had a lot of questions on it.
Do we have anyone that's logged in tonight? Outside of the council? Excuse me?
Yes, sir, we do. We have five attendees.
Good.
Six. One just popped up.
So.
You'll notice what I did on the agenda is I put review, but then I also put public comments discussion. So I'm assuming we'll basically do what we typically do at a public forum. At a council meeting, we'll say, does anyone have any questions, comments? I can go through the raise hand feature, see if anyone wants to. And then I can basically bring them into the discussion here. And then, and then we can obviously go back afterwards before we close the meeting to make sure we've addressed everyone's comments. We actually have eight now.
Okay. Have any of them raised their hand?
We, I think we should ask them if they want to. There we go. Anyone?
Ah, yes, Carla DeRoosted. So I'm going to go ahead, Carla. I hope I got your last name right. I'm going to go ahead and bring Carla in. And I'm, okay, Carla, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're just launching right into this, right?
Sure.
So my main comment is about Prop P funds. In looking at the budget this year, I noticed that it looks like a little bit more than 130,000 of the police fund items that were in place prior to Prop P. If you kind of fall under general housekeeping, it looks like it was moved from the general fund to the Prop P budget. I see there's been similar movement of other budget items out of the general fund into specific funds. And I understand why that may be taking place. But I went back to the actual wording of the proposition and listed right in section one of the proposition. It very specifically states that the taxes, quote, "for the purpose of providing funds to improve police and public safety." I mean, personally, one of the issues that I had with the proposition as it was written was that it was vague and left somewhat open. And since it passed as written, or rather, since it passed as written, I've actually, like, I'm kind of personally in favor of so-called creative uses that pertain to public safety without maybe specifically being a line item for the police department to spend. I don't know that I'd go so far as to advocate for fixing potholes as a much debated comment out of Chesterfield. As, you know, mentioned. But I actually do believe that filling potholes would fall closer to the spirit of the original proposition than general housekeeping items from the normal police budget. So if you look at the budget over time, most, if not all of our other departments have had their budgets cut. And the police department continues to grow even outside of Prop P. So I just wonder at what point do we ask the police department to tighten their belts as well? And yeah, that is it for me.
Okay, thank you. And I'm assuming that we're going to listen to everyone before there's any responses that seem appropriate. In case there's any redundancy on the questions.
Whatever the council wants. If anyone can hear me now, is anyone would like, would anyone like to talk? I don't see any other hands up right now, but give them a minute.
Okay.
I, sorry, can you guys still hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, I actually am getting some texts of some people having some trouble getting into the meeting, so. You might want to give people another minute, and I'll mute myself now.
Well, in that case.
Eight. I'm still showing eight, just so everyone's, no, I got nine, 10. Nine again. I will, I mean, it's completely up to the council, but if they would like to possibly take Carla's question, and then, and then I'll keep my eye out to make sure no one else is coming on and raising their hands.
Yeah, I, I'll, if that's okay, I had some thoughts. I know back when Prop P started, we had talked as a council about creating a definition of public safety that a lot of other cities have done. And I'm opposed to doing that. And I don't disagree with the fact that perhaps we could come up with some expansive uses for that, even besides just specifically police. I think there could be a lot of things in the community that could count as public safety related that may not be just for the police. So I am not opposed doing that in the future and would recommend that we pick up where we left off a couple of years ago and maybe start with that defining what, what that means. I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are on that.
Well, yeah, you know, we've, I sent out the email with regards to inequity advisory group. And I've, I did speak with the people at Gladiator Consulting. We'll talk about that. I'll have a proposal on Friday. So I should be able to send that out for this weekend so we can actually talk intelligently about how we would go about establishing an advisory group of that type at our next meeting on Tuesday. But I think that, you know, my opinion is that suggestions for other uses should probably emanate from, from that group and suggestions that they make. And so I'm, you know, I'm not opposed to other, you know, creative uses of, of the police funds. But obviously, we want to do it in a responsible manner and in an organized manner. And I'm hoping that the inequity advisory group will give us a platform and opportunity to make those decisions as a group with some guidance. And so that's my thought, how those two would, would mesh with each other.
And this is somewhat related, but not, not completely. I just want to make it clear, we're not just moving funds from police to Prop P. We moved over a half a million dollars from the Public Works General Fund as well into parks and stormwater. And it's, it's not uncommon what, what we're doing. I just want to make it, it clear. We, our general fund is hit, was, was obviously hemorrhaging for many, many years. And so this is the first time we've had a balanced general fund budget in many, many years. But I just want to make, make that clear. You guys, we've done this across a lot of other accounts, the fire tax, the parks and stormwater as well. So it's not uncommon practice. And we have done that across other departments as well. I just want to make, make sure Carla's aware that we've done that in other departments as well.
I think she, I think she maybe alluded to that in terms of understanding why. I do think a good question was raised about at some point, you know, this is something I brought up before, that we, you know, we don't have a lot of new ways to create revenue. And so at some point, we do really need to think about ways to save money instead of just sort of moving it around. I mean, you know, not that, not that what you did was wrong, but just that, you know, at some point, that may not work. So I think that's a valid point for us to consider in the future as we're budgeting.
The budget we give you, we go through all those considerations, just, just so the councils are aware. We don't just put in what.
Right, no, I know.
Go through that, and the city manager and the finance director meet with each department head, and we go through. The budget you've seen has already been cut. We've not, we don't basically just give you what the department heads, they need. Go through a justification process before it even reaches the city council. So I know you're aware, but I just want to make sure the attendees are aware of that as well.
Fact is, revenues flatline and expenses always continue to increase. And every city is historically put into a position where they have to figure out either ways to generate revenue or if they're going to cut, and what do they cut and where do they start cutting? So it's a common problem, you know, everywhere.
I just thought I'd like to bring up the fact that no, no new employees are going to be hired. And there won't be any raises for any employees, just so, you know, that everybody's aware of that. And also because of the good job you guys did with the budget, there will be no cuts to our, to our services for our residents. So I just feel that that's real important that everybody, you know, know that as well.
Oh, I have Heidi Helmut just raised her hand. Heidi, I'm going to go ahead. Go ahead and move Carla off to disable talking. I want to move Heidi over. Heidi, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having this working meeting. I admit I'm a little late coming into the budget process. My life was too crazy in the early stages of COVID for it to have jumped onto my radar. So I appreciate you having these meetings. Obviously, our society is in a place right now where there's a lot of discussion of public safety. And Prop P, you know, fortuitously, we have these extra funds. And there's been discussions in the meetings I have been a part of to start looking at public safety as a wider definition than just police. So what I would just like to suggest, I agree with looking at consultants and looking at, at some studies on that. But I also think it might be a good idea to have a couple of listening meetings for the residents on this specifically. So not on a lot of topics. When I say listening meetings, it's truly just that. Listen what people think about, how we should use that, what public safety means. Sometimes it's really easy, and as a manager, I fall into this a lot with my team of trying to justify what I'm doing. At the time, they bring up ideas. So I'd just like to suggest that really there'd be no discussion other than from the residents to give you their thoughts. Then people can think about those and really move forward. With that as one of the voices that you have in addition to a consultant. So thank you.
And Heidi, one of the, one of the items that we have in the budget is to conduct both citizen and, and business surveys. And we're going to see how we're going to integrate, you know, you know, public, public, I'm sorry, public safety items into those surveys so that we can get feedback. That won't be the only method of feedback that we get from the citizens. But we do have to revisit our comprehensive plan. That's something that we've been wanting to do for a while. We also want to do that with the new city manager whenever that happens too. But we need the, the results from the surveys before, you know, we can discuss any of that. So hopefully everything will, the timing will hit in a manner that we can get the feedback that we need. We can discuss it with the, the new city manager as part of that process. And then we can make decisions based on that feedback and have plenty of discussion and opportunities for citizens' input besides the surveys.
Thank you, Mayor Greenberg. Yeah, I agree. The more, the more venues you can have for people to give their feedback, the better. So I appreciate the survey coming out, but also looking at other ways that there can be a kind of a face-to-face, socially distant, as it were, opportunity in potentially a listening meeting format. Thank you very much.
And, you know, since we're talking about Prop P and, and police matters, we are arranging for the chief police crews and myself to field questions in a, we haven't figured out the format. We're working with Laura Miller, who's the Director of Community Development. And there, there would be multiple sessions. I know people, citizens have a lot of questions with regards to police policies, police procedures. And, you know, I've, I've addressed some of those. But, you know, we really need a, a back and forth type of environment so that people can ask more questions and get more answers. So we're, we're trying to arrange that. Laura's working with the chief. And we're going to try and develop a schedule within the next day or two and then figure out how to publicize it so people know that we're, that we're available to, you know, to address their questions.
May.
Go ahead.
Just, it's, it sounds like one thing that will be important in those sessions is to make sure that there's a real effort to be focusing on the listening and to, to build that in when, when you all plan those sessions. Thank you, Heidi.
Okay, um, now, I, I don't see any, oh, I, I do have another hand. It looks like, um, I want to make sure I pronounce this right. Niklan. I'm going to go ahead and disable Heidi's talking and move on to Niklan. If you want to go ahead and unmute yourself, you should be on.
Thank you very much. This is Nikhilan Knapper. I am in Ward Three. And I just wanted to let you all know how much I appreciated you all having the town hall. Forgive me, you know, time kind of runs together, so I can't remember when we had it. But I want to say we had it within the last six months or so. I appreciate that. What I would like to ask you all is, did you all consider the community questions that were provided to you all when you were going through the decision process of creating the budget? Because I know that there were a lot of questions and concerns that would have affected the budget. So just wanted to know if, if those were taken into consideration and, you know, your, your thoughts on those questions that came from the public during the town hall meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to run with that one?
I, I don't mind. That is an excellent point that I hate to say that I, I didn't go back and revisit that. So that's a, that's a fault on my part. I think that's a good point that we should have maybe gone back through that and made an effort to see if any of the pieces from that fit in here. You know, we had talked about a few months ago, I think, before we started, you know, doing an update, you know, maybe in August or something on the website to kind of keep people updated on progress on some of those things. So maybe that's something we could still do and then have in mind when we engage in this process again. Make sure we go back and revisit that. I apologize. Thank you for bringing that up.
I just want to make sure you're aware, staff is, once, you know, the budget, it is a project. We do plan on getting updates, you know, to those questions. We've actually been answering some of those internally.
Awesome.
Well, absolutely. We also, and it's not really an excuse, we, we were hoping to have our survey done by now as well. So we are going to take a citizen survey. We could do that because of the.
You're all sharing a cookie? That's awesome.
Because of the COVID. So anyway, we're, we're moving forward with both of those. It's just, due to the COVID.
And, you know, the, you know, for the most part, the, the budget is generated by the department heads. And not that we don't have any say over it, but, you know, our, our role is more review and, and maybe redirection in this particular case. And we do need to make sure that the department heads are privy to the comments that we made. They're, they're, they're really the best ones to try and integrate those comments into their budget. But I don't know if there's, if there is indeed a, a process for that. Anthony, as far.
We have, we have reviewed every, every single one of the comments. Each department head was there. Each department head has their own sets, and they're, they're already working on review. So we definitely take, take those into consideration, just like we'll do once we get our citizen survey. We're going to, you know, we'll get to see where it was. Many years ago, roads and streets were the overwhelming complaint, like across the board, whether it was businesses, residents, et cetera. And we funnel all of our available resources to streets to work. We're not perfect now, but we're much further ahead since the last time we'd done our survey. And that's really why, in my view, it's important to get this survey done because the one we have now is out of date. And then continue to update these on a somewhat frequent basis. Make sure we're making policies that our residents want and desire. Otherwise, sometimes you're just kind of guessing. So that's why I believe the public, I think we're going to try to have another town hall. I think it's a fantastic idea. We will keep these going. Staff will do these annually if the council wants us to do it. And we can, you know, because of the cost with the citizen survey, you can't do those annually. But we could update it much more frequently than we have in the past. And staff would be all in favor of that because we want to make sure we're meeting resident needs as well.
I also think as we go forward with the establishment of, of the comprehensive plan, we are, I'm assuming that we're planning on a lot of public input on that process. And so, you know, that's, that's going to be a major undertaking. But we need to have several sessions where, where we review our ideas and listen to their, you know, everyone else's ideas in order to get the best comprehensive plan that we can.
And I don't think that, that the suggestions that were made during the town hall meeting were completely disregarded. I, they're specifically, and this one just popped into my head, one of the comments that was made was that we needed to do a tree inventory, and that is in this budget. That's, I don't have the page number off the top of my head. The copy I have doesn't have page numbers. But it's in 280400, and the account number is 70043. And we've put in $5,000 to, you know, do a tree inventory. So that, that's one item off the list that, that we, we were able to take care of in this budget year. So they weren't completely disregarded. I, I think that probably the ones that were clear, that, you know, we could act on now, they're here.
I think streets, too. Streets was a big one in this town hall. And, you know, we're addressing those and some issues and problems, you know, I know that we've addressed. So, you know, like you say, there's some things that we have been able to do.
I was going to say that some of the things that had stuck out during the town hall were issues with traffic and pedestrian safety, processes around community engagement and communication. The, lots of questions about housing and public safety and, and a lot of questions about sustainability and the tree inventory. So we did, we did, we did put in the traffic study. And we wanted to broaden it so that it wasn't just a narrow area. We, you know, we have the resident survey in there and, and the tree inventory. Well, so there, there was, I think there's a few things that line up with some of the strong themes. And then I hope that with the processes around the city manager hiring and any kind of strategic visioning and different kinds of councils and conversations that we're engaging in that we're really taking in the transparency and accountability and community engagement piece are built into all of those processes that we engage in. Thank you for that question, Nikhilan.
From a staff perspective, we'll come to whatever meetings the city council wants to have. We have no problems. We'll meet as, as often as you need, whenever you need. So, but, you know, staff's, at least the direction I have from the council is continue to work with the town hall. And I think we talked about doing another one next year around the same time, which was early January. I believe it might have been, it might have been the third or fourth week more, I think about it in January. And I think we decided that that was a great time to do it. So unless we hear otherwise, we'll, we'll prepare for doing that again.
I also think that Karen, you might be the only one that attended the, and Sean, the last council retreat that we had. Yeah, but, you know, it, it hasn't happened in quite a while. And, you know, so the, you know, obviously, we need to listen to the citizens. But, you know, I think we also need to have an opportunity to, you know, to sit down in, you know, away from perhaps an agenda and, and talk about our vision for the city. And I think a lot of that's going to happen during the comprehensive planning process.
And just a thought on that, it'd probably be good to do that after you have the new city manager on board so you guys could all get to know each other and work, you know, make sure you're all on the same page. Not that I'm trying to get out of a retreat or anything.
Well, our retreat will look like this if it happens.
If it's someplace really fun and you want to do it now, just wait, hold off.
Anthony, there's another hand up.
Okay, um, thank you, Ray. David Sims. I'm going to go ahead and move David into a lot of talks. David, if you want to unmute yourself. Okay, can you hear us, David?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I've got my headphones on, and I haven't spoken with these very, very frequently. So I, I guess I've got just a couple of comments and then some, some questions budget related, but I guess perhaps bigger picture in terms of educating me as a citizen. So I, I guess my one comment would be, it's, it's clear that, you know, the active citizens in this community have confidence in you as leaders, right? The two items on the ballot recently that were related to resources passed overwhelmingly, right? One was school board, school district related. The other was the fire pass. And, and I mean, I think that's again a testament and confidence to, to what we're doing as a community with, with Maplewood. So I applaud that. I will fully admit I've not been active as, 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 as much as I'd like to be or would like to be. You know, and we all make decisions. I did attend a, I think, one council meeting in person, and that was maybe one of your more well-attended ones, which involved the beer cellar or, and the desire to bring them to Maplewood, which we, you know, that, that unraveled or moved, moved in a different direction. But I've enjoyed watching you all on, on this medium, which is much more accessible for someone with two young kids. I wanted to comment about the, the budget. So it's 135-page document that, that I had not looked at until tonight. It took me a few minutes to find it on the website. But will you all speak to mayor and, and the council? And it's, I've heard you all allude to it a little bit, kind of, you know, what's the process? What the departments have gone through over the last several months to present this? You all commented on the fact that you're kind of just checked some balances, reviewing it and setting some guidance as to what direction we're going to. And then maybe speak to what, what you see as the biggest changes year over year from, from last year to this year. And I will, I think, oh, and then the other two comments would be, you've mentioned a citizen survey. It'd be interesting to know how many people responded to that in the past. And it sounds like we're going to do one again this year, which would be fantastic. And then you've talked about a comprehensive planning process. And just if you would comment briefly on that as it relates to the budget and/or kind of the next year. So thank you. That was a large piece, but I'll, I'll get myself and enjoy your response. Thank you.
Okay, so as far as the budget process, Anthony and Karen, would you like to summarize?
Basically, and, and keep in mind, Mr. Sims, we're, we're probably about six to, probably about six weeks behind where we normally would want to be, but we were, we're not sure where our revenues were going to come in due to COVID. So typically, on a, on a, on a good year, the schedule should look something like the, basically give to the city manager. the schedule should look something like the, basically give to the city manager their proposed budgets by February. There would be staff discussion. There would be adjustments. There would be changes based on the city manager's, um, input. And then at that point, they would be distributed to the city council. And we were basically going through a series of different funds. The process this time, we had, uh, it was kind of a newer process, but this should be the same process next year. I guess we probably had these budget meetings. Correct me if I'm wrong, probably about two and a half months. Does that?
The end of March was the first one, I think. The end of.
End of March. So we've been going through these. So at, at any point in time, you know, at that point, the council's kind of going through that. And then the idea would be hopefully next year is to get a refined document. Like you said, hey, I just got this and I didn't have a lot of time. And that's really one of the reasons we're having this meeting as well. We realized the timing was short. But again, we, we kind of were pushed back due to COVID. But next year, um, you should be getting this large document. Probably, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, probably early May. And then that way you would have a lot, lot more time. Ideally, the document would probably be out for public view for 15 to 30 days. It would give someone such as yourself time to call, call staff and ask questions or call the mayor or council and ask questions. And then, and then we'd probably have the public hearing at the end of May or the first meeting in June. And then you'd have plenty of time in the, in the interim to hopefully address questions, comments or concerns. We are going for a distinguished budget award and that's a staff recommendation and the council wants that as well. And that's from the government finance officers association. We haven't had that in many years. It's basically, this is in budgeting. And so i- in order to get that done, we have to pass our budget within this current fiscal year, which ends, ends June 30. So it, it was somewhat of a imperfect or rushed process, but, um, I still think we were basically as transparent as we could throughout that process. But next year you would, you would ideally have more time to review it. And, and we're sorry, it was just the way it worked. Karen, do you have anything to add to that?
I just want to say we've never gotten the distinguished budget award ever. This, this would be our first year. We've gotten the CAFRA award. Our CAFRA looks great. Um, but I'm kidding. But we've never gotten the distinguished budget award. So this is the first year that we would try for it. And we have to have our budget passed by the end of June. After, but have our budget in place by the beginning of our fiscal year, which is what we're working toward. And yes, um, ideally next year you would have a public draft budget ready by early May so that everyone can look at it, make comments, ask questions. But this is the first year that we're trying this different format where, um, we have more transparency. And in, in, in the past, um, the council's gotten the budget when it's basically done. And this time, you know, we've, we've included the council and the public in, in the process. So it's, it's definitely different this year. And I, I think the budget's better for it.
And David, just so you're aware, and so everyone else that's listening, as part of this distinguished budget award process, the document you have right now is not going to be your finished document. As long as we get, but it is sufficient for the award. We're going, we have six months to turn in a final version where we're going to put a lot of different charts and graphs and descriptive information in the budget to make it much more user friendly and, and readable. Even for people that aren't dealing with, and in finance or aren't looking at budgets regularly, they should be able to get a much better snapshot of what it is without going through all 135 pages. So we're working on that, but we basically have to have this ordinance approved by next Tuesday. But that doesn't mean Karen and I aren't going to be working for the next several months, if not up to six months, to try to get this budget even more user friendly. And we will add that to our website. Um, once we get that done and it's, it's all, we're going to be getting a new city manager. The city man, government Maplewood gives that position an awful lot of authority. And it's, I have no idea who they're going to hire neither. But we believe that by getting this award, it will ensure best budget practices for the city of Maplewood. And it's not that, that we weren't doing that in the past, but it would just be another mechanism to ensure whoever they hire is kind of held to that same standard, which we believe they will be, but it's just another method to make sure. Um.
Just to clarify to you, the, the numbers won't change in that budget, just the present.
Absolutely. Thank you. It'll be, it'd just be much easier to read.
Can I add a quick note real, real quick here? I just wanted to say, express appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Traxler and Ms. Dilber for including the council in more of this process. And for, I think that we had a total of six meetings, a budget sessions, which is really impressive. And I also really especially appreciated Ms. Dilber's explanations like offline, but also in some of our public work sessions about, especially explaining, walking us through the CAFRA was incredibly helpful. And so I, I really appreciate how much time you all have spent on this and, and inviting us in and creating that more transparency. It's been, it's been really great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Sims, you had some questions about citizen survey process and comprehensive plan. As far as the citizen survey, obviously we, we need to get as much feedback from our citizens. We also do a business survey too. Because the businesses are so essential to the livelihood of, you know, most of our revenue is generated from sales tax. And when Maplewood was not in good shape, it was due to the fact that we didn't have restaurants and retail. We didn't have businesses in, in the city. And it wa- it was reflected in our budget. But as part of this process, typically we would be hiring a consultant that we would be working with that has done other citizen surveys and business surveys. We would be giving them input as to what type of information we're looking for so that we can make informed decisions as elected officials on not only the budget, but on policies and procedures that, that might need some type of change. As far as the comprehensive planning process, you know, in some cities, that's more or less a planning, urban planning type of, of document, but it expresses and, and regulates public policies on things like transportation and housing, things like that. So, you know, we need to look at all these. They, they haven't been revisited in such a long time and times have changed significantly. And so is the population of Maplewood and the composition of the council. So we really look forward to, you know, to interacting with, with everyone and hearing what they have to say so that we can develop a game, you know, a roadmap for, for the future of Maplewood.
I think another question Mr. Sims had was, does, does, and I wasn't here, so I don't know. Does anyone know how many, like what response you got on the last citizen survey that was done?
How long, how long ago was that?
Gosh, that's been, I would say 10 years or I, I'm just, I don't even remember.
2011 was the.
Now been nine years. So yeah, pretty close.
Yeah, I think it's time.
Yeah, the response was excellent. I mean, the response was very good nine years ago. But again, it's completely out of date right now. So that'll be a council decision in the future, how often they want to update those. Cause again, they are pricey, but you know, whether it's every three or five years, it'd just be something we want to make sure we do.
Do you recall what we have in our budget to facilitate the survey?
Was it 60,000? Was that the one we talked about was?
That was the street.
Oh, that was a traffic.
Traffic study. Um, I'll take a look unless I can get before I can.
I, I'm trying. My kids are using the internet at the same time.
I think that in that updated budget, it'll have a table of contents, right?
Yeah, it'll, we have a 40, uh, 40,000 in the budget.
Okay.
The budgeted number, I mean, that's in an account. If it go, if it's a little more, we're fine. If it's a little less, that's even better. But we have 40,000 budgeted.
Okay. And yeah, some of that will be discussed at the next council meeting too, when we, uh, when we discuss the, the process of, uh, of the whole process with regards to the equity advisory group. So everything is integrated. Everything, you know, is related to each other. So we don't want to handle these things incrementally, you know, one piece at a time. We need to look at them as an integrated whole, uh, because that's essentially the way our community works. So they'll, you know, we'll have a, in a lot more opportunity to discuss the, the process in terms of trying to get feedback from citizens and businesses. What we do with that feedback and the public will be part of that process the whole way, I think.
Thank you. Thank you guys for, for those responses. I really appreciate everything you're doing. And would just add, uh, it sounds like we've got an exciting year ahead of us. Once we get over the, the current times that everyone is dealing with, but, uh, we have to keep moving forward, I guess. Correct? So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I do not show any other hands. Does anyone else have any questions, comments or concerns for the council or anything related to the budget? Okay. That was Mr. Sims and his was up, but no one else is up right now. Just let everyone know.
Okay. In terms of council discussion, are there items that we want to, uh, that we haven't already talked about? So if that's the case, uh, you know, we were talking about, you know, having a discussion, then the opportunity for people to join in. What, you know, we do have a council meeting a week from tonight at 7:30. There, for those that are listening that aren't members of the council, there will be a public forum at the beginning of the, uh, meeting. And there'll be another public forum at the end of the meeting, near the end of the meeting where, you know, the public has had a chance to listen to, to the proceedings. And so hopefully you'll join us for that. And any questions that you think of between now and then, we'll be glad to entertain a week from tonight.
And just to promote our excellent finance director, if anyone has any questions, you can call her or myself. And this is not only the mayor and council, but this is for the attendees. If, as you're going through this budget between now and then, if you have questions, Karen Dilber or myself an email or both of us, and we'll make sure to get any of your questions or comments, concerns answered.
And I personally appreciate the effort that council has put into analyzing the numbers. And I don't think any of us were trained as accountants. And I, you know, I really appreciate the, the in-depth review that's, that other council members have in the analysis of the numbers.
With Karen, Karen has been extremely helpful with this budget process, but it's not just that. She's also helped, you know, we're all a little, uh, you know, we're all filling in for Marty and the city manager. And she's been very, very helpful the last nine months or so. So while I've, I've got everyone's attention. I want to make sure to embarrass her and let everyone know how she's been.
A little more gray than I was before.
Well, I, I think it's worth noting that, you know, we're, we're doing the same job that we did last year without the, uh, you know, the, the top, uh, you know, employee not to, you know, minimize your, your role, Anthony. But, uh, you know, you're doing three different jobs right now. And Karen is, has definitely taken on a lot more responsibility. And in the process, uh, you guys have actually saved us a bunch of money. So we appreciate that.
Karen can probably give you the exact amount.
Not off the top of my head.
Either way, I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that. I'm sure you are because you guys have all dealt with her as well, but you're.
It's nice to know that she is appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, there's no more public comments that I know of tonight is in, as far, we've asked for council discussion. I think, uh, we've done that. Is there any other business that we need to deal with before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, then.
A motion to adjourn?
We have a motion in second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned. We will see you and hear you next Tuesday at 7:30. And hopefully we'll have a lot more attendees for that also.
See everyone later.
Thank you.